So this is a meeting of the Asbury Park Planning Board. And this meeting has been held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, public law, 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken tonight. If you have any electronic devices, we have said you put it on vibrate for the duration of the meeting. Exit's obviously anywhere they already came in. If you're joining now, I would like to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is Monday, June 10th, 7:00 ocean PM. Councilwoman of Austin, Mayor John Moore, Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifert.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Kuzak.
Okay, can I get approval of the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the item on the agenda is application for the Fourth Avenue Pavilion, 1100 Ocean Avenue Block 2402, Lot 16, CBD zone. It's amending the site plan approval for Phase 1 of previously approved, for Phase approved site plan.
Mr. Chairman, review the notices. You're a proper form, board of jurisdiction here.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Circo. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's George McGill. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant. The applicant is Madison Asbury Retail LLC. The applicant's coming before you, seeking amended approvals for the Fourth Avenue Pavilion. They were before you. They received approvals in November of 2017, January of 2018. They had amended approvals and were back before you because the design is a little different. It's substantially the same building, but it's a little different. And the changes that we're making are driven basically by the response that my client received when they put the other application or the other plans to the public. They received feedback, so they're going to make some changes. Essentially, I think the biggest change maybe the elimination of the rooftop deck and the conversion of the space on the second floor basically to accommodate recreation and amusement uses, which are permitted uses, rather than the office use, which didn't get a big response. So other changes, such as change to the front deck and the access points, those are driven by responses that they received from people who were looking at the units. And there are other changes. They're all listed in the application. I have three witnesses tonight. I have Kevin Patterson, who is the project manager for the applicant. We have Mike Gottberg, who is the architect for the project, and Bob Curley, who is our engineer. So without further ado, I would call Kevin to testify. Would you like to swear everybody at the same time, or?
Can you do it, Jack?
Sure. That way if somebody chimes in.
Please raise your right hands, gentlemen. Please swear affirming testimony during this proceeding is to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
State your names for the record.
Kevin Patterson.
Michael Gottberg.
Robert Curley.
Thank you.
I'm swearing, Martin Jason as well.
Please raise your right hands. Do you swear affirming testimony during this proceeding is to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names and your affiliation with the city.
Michael Sullivan, Clark C. James, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
So Kevin, I introduced you as the project manager, you know, the manager of redevelopment man, sorry, development manager for the applicant, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you're thoroughly familiar with this project. I know that.
Yes.
So why don't you explain to the board the reason for the changes with this application?
So as Mr. McGill stated, since our last time in front of you, we did go to market with the building. We got feedback from numerous tenants as to what would make the building more desirable to lease. The prior resolution was approved citing that the roof deck would be solely for the use of office tenants on the second floor. Since then, we found that there's far more interest in sort of recreational use or recreational tenant for the second floor than there is for office space. Thus, we're holding the second floor for office or recreational use. However, since we can't guarantee that the second floor occupants would be office, we're eliminating the roof deck so as not to have any conflict of non-office users utilizing the roof deck against the planning board's intent. When the roof deck was eliminated, that then also led to the shortening of the fire stairs, the vertical elevation, or rather, the vertical circulation, the elevator penthouse were all removed from the building. In addition to that change, as we've gotten feedback from tenants who would be leasing the ground floor, we've tried to adjust the elevations, specifically kind of the canopy arrangement, to what the tenants desired, the locations of some of the doors, specifically, you know, some might shift from center to off-center based on how they want to arrange their floor plans. So it's really just a response to market feedback.
One of the other changes that you're proposing is to the atrium, or the area that we have referred to as the arcade. And I don't like to refer to it as an arcade because it's not an amusement arcade. It's the atrium of the original building.
Sort of a breezeway.
A breezeway, right. So what are you proposing in reference to that and why?
So we're still reserving the option of engaging a breezeway through the center of the building. However, we can't guarantee that the, we're in talks on a few deals, and that center breezeway may end up being the lobby for the tenant upstairs solely. If that was, depending on how that deal goes, we need that flexibility in order to really lease the space and keep the building active.
So at this point in time, you don't have any tenants, do you?
We do have a few tenants signed, but we have basically most of the building under letters of intent.
Okay. And so how do you, how do you see the building operating? One of the questions that, on our checklist, the Asbury Park checklist, they ask for, how will the property operate? To the best of your ability, to the extent that you know it, could you tell the board how you foresee the structure operating?
So the ground floor would be comprised of both dry retail and restaurant uses. All of the tenants would be responsible for maintaining their trash within their premises until a set time, just as all the other boardwalk pavilions operate, a set time when they bring it to the curb. It's collected by our facilities group, taken to our central dumpsters, where it's sorted and carried away by our waste management crew.
And you mentioned restaurants. There's a statement in one of the reports indicating or calling out that if you have a restaurant, you're going to have to comply with the requirements of the ordinance, which I believe is venting the restaurant above the second story.
Correct.
And you don't have any issue with that, right?
Correct. The restaurant spaces are vented. It's because it's a two-story building are vented through a shaft to the roof.
And throughout this application process, even before the first one was approved, we had discussions about the lifeguards. You have the lifeguards in the basement, correct?
Correct. Nothing is changing in the lifeguard storage area in the basement.
Okay. So the, you're also proposing changes to the signage. Can you take us through what those changes may be?
Per the waterfront redevelopment agreement signage requirements, we're, as you can see on the elevations behind these gentlemen, there's basically about eight square feet of signage that's flush mounted to the building. There's also a four-square-foot blade sign per tenant door. We refer to the flush signage as the sign band, per the development agreement requirements. And the blade sign is, I believe, a one-foot by four-foot projection. It's externally lighted with an LED fixture, and as is the sign band, which are both aimed back at the building, illuminating the signs themselves.
And on the sides of the building, you're going to have a logo sign or something of that nature, right?
So the, so on the stair cap, on the stairwell end caps, there is a stucco panel that in the future, as we sign tenants, they would have the option to come back with our support to the board to apply for, I think it's called artistic signage expression, similar to what you would see at Silverball, the pinball museum, or Lingo's Lounge. Silverball has a neon ball and flippers. Lingo's Lounge has a copper lobster on the side of the building. Before, we've worked with the city to create a signage element that expresses the brand without being an expression in words of the name of the tenant. So that's something that we would seek later, but that's kind of what those great panels represent, that there would be something located there in the future.
Just a point of clarification. You will be working with the city signage committee in the future for that, or you're not?
No, no, we will.
You will?
Yeah. And whatever approvals are necessary, we're not seeking any approvals for that right now, so we don't want to, you know, get hung up on that. We will come back for that when it's necessary.
Okay, got it.
However, the remainder of the signage, you know, which is sort of as of right, is a part of this application.
You're presently working on the CAFRA approvals, correct?
Correct. The way the process works, once we receive planning approval, then we submit this packet back to CAFRA, and they issue a letter of CAFRA compliance before we can get our building permits.
Okay. There was a question about streetscape design, particularly bike racks. Do we have any ability to install any bike racks?
So Mr. Curley, our civil engineer can speak more to this when he speaks, but basically due to the confines of the site, there's no sort of yard area that can accept bikes that isn't sort of within the required setback of the transformer that's on the site. Everywhere else is interior space or deck.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think that's it.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Patterson.
Are there any questions from the board? Questions? Are there any questions from the audience? You.
I'm down to you.
Everyone else is presenting.
I'm down to you. Where do you go with this? Right, stand right there.
To the microphone?
For the microphone, what you see is in the show.
Go to the microphone.
Can you pick them up here, or you want to?
Let me see if I can pick them up from right there.
Have to be sworn in. No, not now.
You're just asking questions.
Questions on the, on the, on the, on the. No, I'll say it again. Questions are.
Hi, so.
State your names for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ernest Mignoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
You speaking to my place?
I'm trying. 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Ernest Mignoli. In terms of tenants, it seems like there's a lot of like large developer tenants there. Am I correct? Is that like where I-Star has an office?
Currently, the building doesn't have any occupants whatsoever. It's been vacant for about two years now, as we've been preparing for construction.
I guess I'm a little confused with all the developing going on. I guess, okay, we're talking about the Fourth Avenue Pavilion.
Correct.
Okay.
The white and green building.
Right, with the artwork in the front now as it's being worked on.
Correct.
Okay, so there's nobody occupying that building now?
Correct.
Okay. In the rendition, you seem to pull like a pizzeria, a restaurant, a juice place, et cetera. Is that meaningful, or just for rendition purposes?
Yeah, the signage that you see on the rendering is fictitious, but similarly, it would be, we wouldn't anticipate there'd be restaurants and shops on the ground floor.
Yeah, okay, because I think juice would be redundant. I think pizza now you just open. So that's really fictitious, and nobody's actually signed up with that. The restaurant, are you hoping to follow the Fifth Avenue model where it starts out as a restaurant and then it kind of moves over to a liquor license? And then, you know, like in the Fifth Avenue, remember, it was Ironwell Restaurant, and then they said, well, we're attached to McLeone's, so we could use that license. And the city said, no. Then it was appealed to the state, so now we got another bar on the boardwalk. So are we headed for like Bar Bar Bar, or?
So if a tenant comes in and attains a liquor license and they go through the process, then sure, if they follow a standard process, they would be allowed to. Currently, there's no liquor license attached to the building. But again, if a tenant is able to source one, which are in limited quantity around the city, they could advance that.
I don't think they're in such limited quality, the way they share them now, I think. You know, you get one license, and you can kind of, okay, it's not relative, right?
Right. And it's not a question, it's a statement. Both. Next, gotta go to the next one.
Also, I do remember I was at the meeting when the rooftop kind of created a little bit of a rust, so you did away with that?
Correct.
Why amusement second floor and why not first? People on a boardwalk, don't they like to walk into that pinball place and amusements on the first floor, as opposed to?
Again, it's based on potential tenants who have come to us and expressed interest. And so if they want to rent our space, you don't argue against it.
Yeah, no, you don't. So by recreation, you mean exactly what, like bands, or?
Well, for instance, pinball is a great example, you know, something where people would come and engage in a game.
Really? Maybe like ski ball and all that kind of stuff?
Potentially.
Is that really in the plan?
It's, you know, that's what we're trying to clarify tonight.
Is that what recreation carries with it? That's a question.
I'm not answering.
I thought you were gonna say it's not. Is that what recreation designation carries for the second floor? Amusements?
Correct.
Right. And sometimes it can include amusements for youngsters instead of, I think we're kind of overplaying the adult amusements in this city. So maybe it could be games and things like that?
Correct. Yeah, it's a broad brush.
Okay, good. And, you know, really, it looks nice to me. I think the roof was a bit of an issue, and you seem to really tamed it down, and it almost looks like a real redo, is it? You're kind of like rebuilding it and refurbishing it and making it integral, and it doesn't look too much different than what's there now, am I correct?
Same color, you know, we're reusing the same structural frame and applying a new skin and refreshing the material.
Okay, well, that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So redo the rooftop? So where does it look, the view, like from the ocean club looking down in there, it's kind of, have the fence around it?
Right, so there's a mechanical enclosure that wraps around the, where all the HVAC units would be. So basically, if you're on the street level, the boardwalk level, or, you know, kind of below the rooftop, you'll, right, you just see a clean screen edge. Again, if you're on the 16th story of the building looking down, you would see the equipment.
I remember in the original application, there was some discussion about like a green roof on there. Have you given that consideration as well, or is that?
It's sort of all eliminated when the roof deck was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions from anyone? Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, and also, for the record, Councilwoman of Austin has joined us.
Who marks them jackets?
I'll mark in a second. Which one do you want? Doesn't matter.
A1 could be the, let's mark.
We have an A1. We do have an A1. If you want, we can list them as more than activity. Do you want?
Is that, is that our right jacket?
Sure. You got A1, which professional marking. A1, it's indicated one on A1.
Yeah, and each one has a title.
How about it?
They have. They have. They have. They have private functions. They contemplate having the rest of it kind of covered. There's never like, there's any information as of course.
So Mike, you might as well come up. I'm calling you next. Mr. Chairman, calling Mike Gottberg, the architect.
Mr. Gottberg testified for the last application in 2008. He's been previously qualified.
Okay, great. Welcome.
So Mike, they've just accepted your qualifications. You prepared the plans that we just marked as A1 through A4?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to identify A1 through A4 for the record and then just take us through the project?
Do you want to go over just the changes?
Yeah, we'll go over the changes. Mr. Chairman, I think we'll highlight the changes, and we'll take it that way. Those changes have been listed in the application, so you can follow along.
A1 is proposed floor plans. A2 is proposed building elevations. A3 is proposed building perspective views. And A4 is details and my.
Okay, Mike, why don't you just take us through what we changed?
So just to list here, the first item here is the stair layout for the wood deck on the Ocean Avenue side will be changed because we have added additional stairs lining up with the entrances to the tenant spaces. The item two is the, we reintroduced the entrance into the basement from the Ocean Avenue side. That's this location here. See there, it's going down. That's, there was an existing, it's based in that location, we've modified it in the original design, we had taken it out, so we're putting that back in. Overhead glass doors that were in the front, front entrances to the breezeway, these have been taken out and replaced with regular hinge doors. Instead of the overhead, we've got two double doors on either side of the boardwalk entrance and the Ocean Avenue entrance.
And Mike, that's to make the structure more adaptable to the uses that may be proposed?
Right, as we discussed earlier, that gives us the flexibility to use that for, if there's a single tenant up there, we can make that an entrance to that space above. Stair and elevator to the basement and the rooftop levels have been removed. We said the original design, the elevator went to the basement as well as the stair, and also it went up to the rooftop deck. Now that we've eliminated the rooftop deck, the elevator and stairs system that goes up to the rooftop deck is no longer, and also down to the basement, it's just storage and lifeguard area, so there's no need to bring any elevators down the basement area. First floor space for retail restaurants, tenants have slightly modified. Again, we discussed this with Kevin. We've modified the tenant spaces so that'll allow more flexibility. And again, getting the feedback from potential tenants, we've altered the plans to address their needs and concerns and allow them to surround these tenant spaces with their businesses. Second floor has been redesigned as a retail food service and our use for recreation. Again, we've discussed this earlier. Before the second floor plan, it used to have a series of office spaces. Now we've taken those out, and the support spaces, basically all that emphasis of the support office spaces. All that has been eliminated, and again, to allow for flexibility for different types of uses. And again, it's all about feedback from the potential tenants. The north and south end about these spaces were reconfigured and enlarged. You can see on the ends here, we have these triangular, about these spaces, they were once, at the original design, they were triangular, and they were lots, no, they were smaller, about six square feet smaller. We made these a little larger now to accommodate a larger tenant space, so we made it more proportional to a tenant that might occupy the whole floor. So we've made these, we configured them a different shape, and the heads of square footage did this. The proposed facade materials are gray storefront and the white stucco brick. It has concrete brick in it, but the building, the roof vision, the screen mechanics, these finishes have been redone and streamlined the building and made it a little more modern. We introduced it on white brick and stucco. Originally, the whole building was white brick, but we take portions of that and just accented the stairways and some of the frontage with brick. The rest of it is stucco, it's a stucco finish that's also white colored.
Mike, we have materials, right? Do you want to show those now, maybe?
Yes, we have materials. Do you want to show this right now?
It seems like a good time.
This is the white brick that we're interested in providing. All the metal features that are on the metal screen, mechanical screen, all the storefront, frames, all of the other metal items on the building have this color, it's called dove gray.
Mike, let's take a moment. We need to mark these as well.
Okay.
Preserve this brick forever.
Yes. Time in the morning of the fall to Asbury.
So we'll mark the brick A5.
Thank you.
And Mike will take you through the other things over here. We'll have to mark them individually. Yeah.
This is the stucco finish. What? I have a smaller, you don't have to, I have a smaller.
Do you have any meaning?
Remember Ignats? Crazy Cat and Ignats, the brick?
This is, this is, it's cut. Pull this away.
All right, so make that a word, whatever. Whatever the issue is.
Where's the brick versus the stucco on the building side?
The brick, the brick is located on the stairway, stair edge, the exit stairway is on the north and south sides on the Ocean Avenue portion of the building. So you can see that has the brick in between here on the north and south. We provide the stucco. Okay, so we just, we just get access to certain areas with the brick, and in all the kind of mundane or not important areas, we provide the stucco finish. And this is the stucco finish.
We should mark that as A6?
Right, and it's similar to the color of the brick here. And it's a smooth, smooth surface with a little grit on it. And again, as I mentioned before, this is the Luma storefronts, the equipment screen, and all other, all the metal items that are on the building, this is dove gray.
We'll mark that A7?
So it's a metal sample dove gray.
And then those are the canopy colors?
These are the canopy colors.
So we'll mark the canopy colors 8, 9, and 10?
And these colors were already approved. That's why we're introducing them again, so that there's no issue. And again, it's a composite material, and it's going to be the resin metal type.
So we marked the, what color is that?
It said yellow, blue, and red.
Yellow, blue, and red?
Yeah. Let's do that. I mean, do you have the colors in the back, please? You want it, real colors, or you just want to say red? I mean, it's just.
Well, we mark, everybody will know that's the yellow ones, as opposed to the blue or the red ones. We have them marked now.
Okay, and then, again, these are the canopy colors.
Okay.
Does the board wish to see?
Does the board wish to see them?
Pardon me?
Oh, sure.
Okay, and the other items, again, we've, in the breezeway area, taken out the main entrance. Again, created more flexibility and made it similar to the other canopies. And again, the colors that you see there.
So I'm just, are you trying to, is your push to try to get a single tenant on the second floor?
Not necessarily. Kevin's the one that's dealing with it, potential tenants. Trying to keep it as flexible as possible until we get a tenant. Tenant signage, as we discussed earlier, we did alter it a little bit and had a different approach to the signage as close to the waterfront requirements. And here, as Kevin had mentioned before, you have the signage band that's running on the boardwalk and the Ocean Avenue side to two foot high by, and plus the whole length of the building, both the Ocean Avenue side and the boardwalk side. And the signs are eight foot in length.
And Mike, you're referring to A2 and those signs are just, they're located just above the canopies, right?
On the canopy, on the boardwalk and Ocean Avenue side. That's the west elevation and the east elevation.
So Kevin already spoke about the larger signs that we'll have to come back for. Could you just show on A2 where they are located, those areas?
It's on the stair, stair towers or the exit stairway on the north and south side of the west elevation. That's the Ocean Avenue side. That's motif here, we have a pinball motif, also a pinball motif already on the end.
And that, those motifs are just representative, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's something that's going to be taken care of later.
Okay.
When we get tenants. And also, we mentioned the blade signs. You can probably see them a little better here on the elevations. I mean, all the respective views, that's A3, blade signs that we discussed earlier are about four, four square feet. It's one foot high and four, four feet in length. And all these sign, the sign band and the blade signs are all lit by LED lighting fixtures. They're noted on A4 in the lighting plan. And there's a lighting fixture schedule that describes where the lighting fixtures are. So you can give the luggage and the luggage all that all the manufacturer capital.
Mike, can you talk to whether those lights will spill out onto the adjoining properties or should we leave that for Mr. Crowe?
We'll leave that for, oh, we'll leave that for Bob. But these are, they're, all the light fixtures, except for the goos next, are directed towards the signage that on the building. The goos next are basically illuminated downwards, washing the face of exterior wall and illuminating on the sidewalk, the walkway. But Bob will talk throughout the village and walkway. And the last one here, additional, we provide additional mural locations on the north and south elevation. And that's, these are the north and south elevation. These were introduced in the last design here in here and these actual ones here on the other ends of the north and south elevation. Again, those are also illuminated by LED lights, but they're shined directly, the light shines directly on the entrance.
And in reference to those, we understand that we'll have to go through whatever approval process we need to do with the city for the murals.
The murals, right, they're just some kind of program that the city has.
You understand that, right? Mr. Patterson?
For ours, they can get them while, and they'll be, they won't be permanent. I guess they, a different art will come and do different things on it, which would be pretty nice.
Can you just explain again how the lighting is on the murals? How the lighting on the murals?
If you look on the elevation, on the top here, you'll see that it's a linear light fixture. There's lots of light fixtures.
Oh, I see, okay.
And it'll shine on here. I know they show that, that right, but it's a thin line, you know? And we do have cut sheets on, and I don't want to introduce that. If you're interested, we can have a, like a cut sheet so you can see what it looks like.
Well, why don't we introduce it since you mentioned it?
Better to have too much than not enough.
Yeah. You can't say, "No, I don't want to see it."
Okay, this is, this is what the blades are.
So let's mark that A11?
Yeah.
And just describe that for us, Mike?
This will go right above the blade signs and you can see that it has two lamps. And only the sign will light both sides of it.
And what, did you call that a cut sheet?
This is a cut sheet, yeah.
And what is, what is a cut sheet?
Or it's a technical.
Specification.
Specification, yeah.
It just describes the lights that we're going to put above the murals, right?
So I have, and I have one for each of the light fixtures. This is the goose, this is the one that you talked about. And you can see it's a, it's a linear, linear light fixture. It projects out the wall and then it'll shine right on to the mural and the sign band.
And if we could mark that A12?
A12?
What was the first one?
And that's, that first one is the, we both call the blade sign, the blade sign light fixture. And then the A12 will be the linear murals, linear mural light fixture and sign band fixture. And then the last light fixture is the goos next.
And that would be?
This is a typical goos next, and everybody's familiar with that.
A13?
A13. So that's a goos neck light fixture.
Okay, so let's just mark all those and send those over to the board?
The linear?
Send them to Michelle first.
Oh, okay.
She can put a stick on them.
Yeah, just give them that. So this is 11. This is 12. And this is 13.
We went all, we went through all of them.
Okay, there. Well, I have some more questions for you.
Okay.
So the, one of the reports notes, asks whether you can see the mechanicals on the roof from the ground. So could you go over the screening and whether or not you could see them, are they visible from the ground? I think you already testified in part to that, but.
Right. The equipment screen is, as noted on the plans and elevations also, is six foot high. So all the, and if you look at the plan, the roof plan on A1, you see that it's sort of the screen enclosures, sort of, is in the center of the roof. And we're going to get every, our mechanical engineer will put these, will put the mechanical equipment in this space, right? So it will be hidden from the street. If you were on the street, you're not going to see it. I can't imagine with top units being more than six foot tall. So it'll be, it'll be concealed, not only from the street, but off the floor. Again, it's going to be enclosed toward in the center of the building. And if you look at the perspectives here, perspective views of A3, these are all standing on the street here. So you barely, if you only see the screen, you know? So it's, that's how far back it is. The elevation is a little bit deceiving because it's a flat. So it has the depth in perspective, whereas you can see this, you can go and see that if you're standing here on the boardwalk on the Ocean Avenue, you probably won't see it because it's that far back.
So A3, that, that's a fairly accurate representation of what you would see on the street?
That's right. These are actual modeled images that we put in a computer and these are all accurate. And it's all, so what you see here, what you see with your app?
This goos neck is red on here. Is that the color that you're going to go with or are you going to go with black?
Mike, there's a question as to how the applicant's going to handle the solid waste disposal. My understanding is the, each unit will have its own room. Could you go through that?
Yes, each tenant, I mean, when a tenant takes over a space, they're required to have a cold room. And they'll put their waste in that room. The manager gets what they require for restaurant tenants. The restaurant tenant, yeah.
Food waste.
Food waste, of course, yeah. So they'll have to, they're required to have that cold room that they store their, the stuff that wastes in the kitchen scraps and all that. So, and then there's a regular trash collection by management. And they'll pick up at a regular time. And they'll, they'll put their trash in at those times. Other than that, it'll be in that, in that room.
So when they collect the trash, do they actually go to each individual business and collect it from that room or is there a place where it's put out?
So it all goes to, you have to go to Ocean Avenue, building by building and it's collected.
Okay.
They agree to market times.
Mike, in reference to the walkways and ramps, those walkways and ramps will be ADA compliant, obviously, right?
Yes, I mean, they're existing. I remember we talked about the ramp that actually looked up to the deck. Yeah, we only have, you have the one ramp that goes up to the deck and that is ADA compliant, so one on 12 slope. And the rails are three foot high, it's all compliant. And again, we see that our construction doctors in town, they're going to do another review, make sure that we comply, but that's, that's not going to, you know, we won't move anything.
Question about the lighting. Again, you said the blade signs would also be lit, is that right?
The lighting fixture for the blade signs.
It was at that point, the small?
Yeah, it's that, she's got it.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it'll be on top on the, I don't know, the wall, just above the blade sign.
Right.
It's going to project out into the two lamps on either side of that blade sign.
Okay.
What about the strip signs? How would they lit?
They'll, they'll be, they'll be blade, well, you can see here, this is the sign, sign band here, and the lighting fixtures will be below that. And it'll project out a little bit like shown on the thing and then project right on the sign.
So it's projecting up on the sign?
Yeah, up on the sign. And then the murals are just the opposite, you know, the top, projecting.
Right.
Question about the changes to the elevator. If I'm understanding this right, so there's no more elevator access to the basement? So whatever tenant would be on the second floor or even the first floor, I guess, they're not carrying, I guess, heavy things up from the basement anymore?
Yes, you have, you have to say, the north and south, north and south of the west elevation, that those are the stairtowers in the basement.
Okay.
So, and they go to the second floor. So they have anything, they'll go to either one here too. They go down the stairs and go down and access the basement. Also, we have the, we still reintroduce that one access to the basement on the outside too from the Ocean Avenue. So you have two ways to get into the basement.
So right, so if there's a, so if there's two tenants on the second floor, that breezeway will have to be common access because that's where the elevator is, yeah?
Right.
Okay.
You got a question on the board?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I had two quick questions. The, you had said the banner signs are, will be uplit instead of downlit. Why is that?
We wanted to access the sober hang. Sober hang is, it's quite, it's quite pronounced, you know, it's like almost two feet out. And we wanted to uplift it so that, you know, we could kind of access that also. So we kind of want to lighten the top portion of the building along with the sign. So it gives it a little interest, you know, when you're looking at it at nighttime and kind of like separates the rest of the building, it looks like it's floating up there, you know? So it's got a, that's the reason why we kind of uplift it, so we can kind of access that, that the roof line here.
Okay, and then the, so the roof line will kind of contain that light in terms of it going out?
Yeah, I mean, it's still, not a whole line, but that's the reason why we uplift it rather than going down. So, and we have, don't forget the goos next are going in the opposite direction. So we have these lights kind of lighting the top and then the goos neck kind of like bottom.
I was asking more about light pollution, like that concern of having too much light?
No, they're just, these light fixtures are low emitting and they're not, they don't have a lot of movement. I mean, they're, they're just enough to spot the, actually just enough to the sign band. So it's not, that's not an issue.
It's real light.
And again, again, there's options with this light fixture. They do have dimmers and if there's an issue, there's an option to have it blow the tent scene of light, so.
And my other question, oh, so the green roof that was discussed as a possibility with the, before the deck was removed, last iteration of this, that there was no consideration of keeping an extensive green roof on the outside of that mechanical, just for?
I'm not sure if it was a budget thing or, I mean, I, again, there wasn't a lot of interest for the roof as far as occupying it. So we just felt that, you know, it was, it was something that, you know, people, when they're on the, on the deck, they can look at, it's something nice to see. Since nobody's going to really, it's a very utilitarian roof. It's just there to house the mechanical equipment, so really no way it's going to go up there. So you can see an interest to pursue the green roof at that, at this time.
So it wasn't for the environmental benefit initially, it wasn't for that?
No, I mean, this do have, you're right, it does have a bar mile. But it, we do have it, the roof's going to be white, you know, and it will reflect, I mean, you're not going to get a lot of heat. And again, you're actually right about the benefits, but I guess we were looking at it more like an aesthetic thing for the roof deck since we didn't have that kind of advantage that I knew.
I was just curious because I think any opportunity, when you can do that, I understand the reasons why, what you're saying, but also the comment about just looking down.
Right.
That it's.
But this will be a white, it will be a single ply white roof. And they're not bad looking, I mean, they're not crazy either, but they're not, they're not nice to work. And it's not right if the roof is up here.
I've got a couple of questions. From the first floor plan, it appears that you're going to have six tenants that will have access both east and west side of the building to be through?
Right. East, the way we have it arranged now, they all have, they all have, wait, we do have one that's, there's two, there's two tenants here along column line six and column line, I guess, column line four, you do have a tenant that only have access to the world or the ocean. The rest of them are, you know.
Isn't that, isn't that a doorway opening out to the?
Yeah, I think, well, again, there's, it depending on who rents the space, it will be potentially.
Potentially tenants could face either or.
Either or, but there's, it could be divided also.
So it's possible instead of six, you could have a dozen?
That's right, that's right.
Is there any access to the, from the breezeway to the tenant space?
The original design did, this one doesn't.
This was, that's not?
That's not.
Okay.
It's still made based on how the occupancy works.
Depending on if the upstairs has multiple tenants or an office used as opposed to a single recreational user, that may still be desirable to, so we're maintaining the flexibility to open into the adjacent tenancies.
Aren't you, I'm talking about the first floor now, not the second floor?
Correct, but the second floor, the lease of the second floor impacts the ground floor and the breezeway.
Yeah, depending.
Didn't you, didn't you say that you're abandoning the office space?
We're maintaining the option for the office space. It's all a matter of, you know, we've had significantly less interest in office space, but we're keeping the door open. It would still be desirable if we found an appropriate office tenant for that space to have the breezeway or even potentially if it's a recreational user, if that tenant wants, you know, interaction with other tenants on the side, we would, we would still entertain that and would still consider building it up that way.
So if that option's not altatamed, in other words, we could have retail space to open up to the breezeway, that's, it's still an option.
Well, okay, but now, aren't you introducing something now? You're saying now that on the second floor, that you're not abandoning the office space, you're just, for the purposes of this discussion, you're eliminating it from this, but it may come back in the future, is that what you said?
We're not, we're maintaining the option for that more for recreational space. It could be a single tenant, it could be multiple tenants. We're trying to maintain the flexibility to this space.
And you're saying it could be recreational, it could be office space?
That's correct.
Okay, who has access to the basement?
Only currently, it would be, if it's leased by any tenant, they could take that out as additional storage space, but again, they would have to access it from the exterior. There's no internal access.
And would you, are you considering subdividing the basement space?
We haven't had any developed conversations about it. If there were multiple tenants who wanted to take storage space there, we could discuss it, but generally, it's, it's not very water type space consistently, so it's not very desirable to lease.
And the basement space is accessed just through those north and south west quarters?
North, south, there's one on the center.
Well, yeah, that, from the boardwalk, but that's.
No, no, no.
No, it's from the.
I'm sorry, underneath the board.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the, that tunnel has been long abandoned. There's a stairwell.
On the Ocean Avenue side.
On the Ocean Avenue side. I'm sorry, that's it.
Is the other staircase off of the center hall foyer going down interior downstairs?
Yeah, there's no interior central stair going down.
It's not a stair.
Correct, right, that's true. It's just the second to the second.
It's just the sec, to the second.
My God.
So who are the... Who are the bathrooms for? Who, who has access to the bathrooms?
So the bathrooms would be by whomever as a patron of the tenants.
So, 'cause you said that there's a possibility, depending on what the second floor tenant is, that the breezeway may actually be like a lobby for that use, would people be able to access that lobby if they want to use that? Or is it...
It would be similar to any, you know, if they're a patron of that tenant, then the tenant would give them access to that.
I think, I think Rick's saying, it doesn't, there's no bathroom shown on the second floor, so?
No.
Is that what you're asking, that, that...
Well, I mean, if there's all these other tenants on the ground floor, is the bathroom solely for the upstairs use? Or can anybody use it?
Yeah, I mean, it can be, it can be. We'll, we'll design it accordingly, I mean, you see that bathrooms are dashed on, on these, these are just placeholders, uh, they're not necessarily the actual location, they're just placeholders. So they, when we do submit to the town, they'll, they'll understand that there is plumbing required, but that's, they're just placeholders.
And upstairs, basically, there's no bathroom shown because there's not a solid intensity.
We don't know how it's gonna be provided to the tenant.
Basically, basically, you're asking us to approve an open shell for the first floor, open shell for the second floor?
Correct, it's a speculative commercial building, basically.
And, and you can do whatever you want when you get there?
Well, as long as they're within, within, within what's allowed.
Per building code and per zoning code, right?
We want to meeting with, without zoning, I mean, we have followed zoning, we have followed...
So if there is a restaurant on the second floor, you're gonna be putting cold ones up there?
If there were restaurants used there, they would not store their trash, just, sorry.
Okay, so the trash would be looked, stored on the second floor prior to being brought down?
Right, correct, there's a large elevator for transport, yeah, that actually, that's it, we made that elevator larger for that, you know, to accommodate.
Going to the balconies on the second floor, what's their purpose?
Purpose is to, um, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, we're just gonna put, they don't got any tables in there, right? It's just for...
Yeah, we've had, we've had several tenants who, but they were in the prior design in a slightly different format, we've gotten feedback from potential tenants that they would rather have them angled to the side, so that, you know, for instance, when you have Fourth of July fireworks, that they can allow people outside to view, that they would have basic use of the balcony, and something to further enlighten the boardwalk.
Would those balconies be constructed in the event that you use this, uh, you have amusement games, uh, on the second floor?
I, I wouldn't put the amusement games on the balcony, it's just, it's just a building open, and people say...
Are they open? Are they open, 'cause it's very difficult to tell from the drawing, whether they're open or closed.
If you look at the plan, there's, there's double doors on each one.
Yes, but by the same... It looks like there's windows on it as well, on the outside.
Both kind of part of the ceiling, a two dimensional ceiling.
This is a very small scale, but there, those are act, this is actually a storefront to the business.
I've heard from boardwalk, if they're on the bakery, you can see how it's configured.
Okay.
So you get an idea of the space as well.
So it could be used for outdoor dining if it was a restaurant?
I guess, I mean, it's not that big, it could, how many, I don't know how big you can get, but it's, 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 it's about, uh, two hundred, two hundred and ninety square, this one must be about three hundred square feet.
At total or each balcony?
Each balcony, yeah, three, this is two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety. I think this one's a hundred, two hundred and fifty square. So they're not really that large space.
The, I think it was the, uh, the planner's report indicated that the, uh, the ramp, the ADA access ramp coming from the south to the north might be duplicated on the other, uh, from the north to the south as well, have you considered that?
Uh, yes, we have, but, um, you, it's, it's strange, uh, I mean, we really want to get more seating in there, uh, you know...
Basically, there, there are several reasons, one, you have a transformer, yeah, you have a corner, the operator on this corner that would make locating the ramp to the console here, but if you did put the ramp in, you would have to slide it back against the building and create less space, which would be in conflict with the intent of the waterfront redevelopment agreement, which cites that we should be actively working to activate Ocean Avenue through the, through the creation of cafe space, retail space that opens out to the Ocean Avenue space.
The issue was raised concerning bike racks. On the, uh, on the first floor plan, there are, one, two, three, there are four spaces where the wall apparently goes out to the foot of the stairs. Is it possible to bring that wall back into the head of the stairs and use other spaces for bike racks?
Again, that would be more congruent against the intent of the waterfront redevelopment agreement by limiting the deck space, which would be used for, could be used for cafes and retail space. The only spot that we could, the only free area that we could buy and put it would be around the transformer, which we're not allowed to because of the, the depth required. However, we have donated, uh, in response to the mini items, which are part of the subsequent developer agreement with the city. I don't know how many bike racks throughout the boardwalk area, tens of thousands of dollars worth that we locate in the past few years that we've sold.
I think we did forty-four two years ago, Kevin.
Yeah, lots, lots and lots. Um, also, I know that Mr. Curly can explain where there are currently some that are set along the street in front of us currently, in the public roadway. Um, I don't know if there's a potential to add more along the streets.
So what, what is that space going to be used for, the space in between the stairs? Is that just an open deck? You're putting seating out there?
Correct, if there's a...
You're putting seating out?
If there's a restaurant space, they would have cafe space extending there, similar to what was approved for Fifth Avenue. If it's retail, they could have retail racks, that's allowed.
You just said that that was to enhance the, uh, uh, Avenue appeal?
Correct, to align it.
Wouldn't the bike racks do the same? Might be, would that be a method of making Ocean Avenue more user friendly?
Well, typically, and I can also ask Mr. Gonzalez to address this, we apply a similar kind of methodology to the location of bike racks, so that they're not burying random spots, so...
I understand, all, all I'm asking is, have you considered it, and, so what are the pros and cons?
So, I would say, in considering it, we have ruled it out for the following reasons. One, that there is an existing methodology that's been employed as to where bike racks go, so that visitors more and more consistently know where to find them, and they're not kind of erratically located. Secondarily, in order to maintain the activation of Ocean Avenue for retail and for cafe use as the waterfront redevelopment, which, agreement which we try to honor sites, we've fulfilled the smooth means of development there.
Uh, I think that's, that answers all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask on the planning board? Professionals? Can we comment, any questions from the audience?
Mr. Public.
Mr. Public.
Hi, Ernest McNally, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I find it interesting, the trend that, uh...
This is not your question.
Oh, I'm sorry, questions only, okay, yeah, so, I, I find it interesting, the trend that when we come here and we see the renditions of Fifth Avenue and, and how it was presented, and, and then what it turns into, and one of my questions to you is, is a very important question asked, where originally you said, well, we're abandoning this, and we're abandoning the roof, and we're abandoning offices, and then, and then a while later, it comes back that, well, we're really not abandoning anything. So the question is, is the plan to make this Fourth Avenue Pavilion exactly like the Fifth Avenue Pavilion, which means now a bar, an outside bar on the boardwalk? I, I mean, real, it, it's, it's very sophisticated, and I can appreciate it, but we're starting to see a pattern here of like liquorizing everything, becoming insane, well, no, it's, it's just gonna be games and skee ball, and then after it's built, it's, it's more than skee ball.
Well, Kevin, do you want to take that?
That's a question, I mean, that's a question, that's just a question.
So, in response to it, you know, again, the requirement of the resolution, as it was previously passed, was that the rooftop deck, which we'd say we're abandoning, is, was only for the use of office tenants, because now we cannot, with certainty as developers, say that the second floor tenant is going to be solely office, we in good faith have eliminated the roof deck to eliminate the opportunity for any misuse of the space by anyone who is not an office user, and meeting the intent of the board's provision. Again, on the second floor, we think office use would be great, so we're not abandoning the hope for that, but we currently have more interest from recreational groups who might do pinball, or skee ball, or shuffleboard, or pool, any kind of recreational activity there. It's not limited to one or the other, it's a matter of what is the best deal that's brought to the table. In terms of liquor use, if, you know, if liquor use is desired in the future, we would go through the typical process of the city for approval and state.
Okay, so my question is, would it be the same in the, as the Fifth Avenue, in other words, one, one tenant has a liquor license, and then they figure out a way that there's an underground basement that connects them, so now you get reclones coming up with iron whale with a liquor license, I mean...
One, one point of...
Okay, I'm, it's a question.
This isn't a Fifth Avenue...
I know, I'm saying, but are we looking at the pattern? Same owner of the building?
I didn't speak.
Sorry.
I didn't answer your question.
Okay.
In the case of Fifth Avenue, the building was always presented as a building that would have restaurants and bars. That was always from conception, that the case, the building has a joint ground floor corridor, submitted, approved that way. You said that they can't screen it because of...
I gotta ask a question.
There is no liquor license associated with...
No, no, that's not my question, I, I'm, I'm just waiting at least to get some attention.
I, I think there's a pattern, like, Kevin.
What?
Oh, wait a minute, there's no question?
There's no...
No, there is a question.
He, he answered your question. He answered your question. There is no liquor license.
You know, it's just, it's from a bill's witness, he answered, he answered.
Okay, uh, you mentioned the basement leaks, was there damage from Sandy?
No, it's simply, I mean, every building was damaged by Sandy.
Correct.
Sandy had used it, it was all...
In the refa, re, uh, fab, of this building, refurbishment, is it structural and also like, are you...
Yeah.
So in other words, if you get a tenant that's a restaurant, and they need basement storage, which they're gonna need, uh, are, are you gonna structurally prepare the building so that it won't leak?
So every basement space on the waterfront takes on water, it's a matter of the pumps meeting the required, uh, influx of water to balance.
Is that...
We would make every effort to try, at this point, we, we need to see how the forms of work, we consider looking into tenant meeting the necessary...
All right, so a question, are, are there any, could this basement have a, a restaurant tenant, store food in the basement, and have problems with leakage?
Again, it would be our intent to confirm the quality of the space before we would have our...
So you mean you could say categorically, for this restaurant tenant, you got the basement, and it won't leak?
There's no sort of space in these...
That's a question.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to comply with all building codes, all health code, upper codes, so like, they're controlled by other standards that they would have to meet, so I, I think the testimony clearly is, they don't know who the tenants are going to be, so answering hypothetical questions is kind of difficult. They don't mean to be invasive, they just don't have that information to give you, but they will have to comply with all building codes and all health codes that apply to whatever they want to do, and they're pretty much leaving it open, that they're going to, you know, comply with the permitted uses, uh, but they don't want to be constrained because the business, um, the market, so to speak, is saying, we'd like to do something else, so they'd like to need it, so that's what they're saying to this board.
The market, but certainly not the residents of Asbury, in other words, you talk about a six-foot structure above the building? That building's in front of the I-Star building? There's no one here?
Where is your question?
It is a question. Does anyone from the I-Star building, that you're gonna put a six-foot structure above there? Were they notified, were they notified?
Mr. McNally, everybody received notification.
Well, can I...
But if he doesn't know, they're notified.
Okay, so then I'll ask you.
The board attorney said notifications are, were done correctly and in line.
You know, you don't know what it's like to be a public here. It's like everybody is like against what you think, what you say, no, that's how you feel, that's how we feel.
This is not...
That's just, I'm a taxpayer, I want you to understand.
Mr. McNally, one person speaking at a time, they can answer you.
We, we allow you great latitude, you ask many questions that are beyond the scope of direct examination, but we allow that courtesy, so for you to say that we don't extend any courtesies to you, and you're being not treated fairly, is absolutely untrue.
I didn't say that. I said...
You're insinuating, I'm not gonna argue with you, I want a hopeful application.
You are arguing, listen to me.
No, I'm telling you where we're at, okay?
Somebody should tell you to talk it down.
And, and why don't you ask your questions?
Okay.
Make them relevant, and let's get to it.
All right, here's my question, I have one for you.
No, you don't, you don't question me, you question the witnesses.
So, is the intent, I don't know how to get at this, the roof, could you come back five years later and want to use the deck on the roof?
Any changes would have to come before the board, they'd have to get...
I'm aware, I'm aware of that, but I'm, I'm just a little, I'm a little concerned that the original presentation was, we're abandoning the roof, we're abandoning offices, and then as you start to listen more and more, it says, well, if we come back and we meet the zoning and the planning...
Okay, I think, I think we've answered all your questions regarding what the intent is.
I think there should be more. I just have one, one other quick question, follow up on the, the lighting, uh, the lighting on the band, uh, is that going to be close enough to the building so there's no spillage from that, the light will be reflecting off the, the soffit above the band?
No, it, it, majority of the light will be, is focused on, on the sign bands itself, any spillage, you know, go up to the, you know, just to fill it back.
Well, you have, you have an overhang, uh, you said it was a two-foot overhang?
Yes.
Okay, is it possible that that lighting could be adjusted in such a way so that it will not spill past that, uh, for the vertical, vertically past that?
Yeah, and it's adjustable, I mean, once we get it up there, we'll make sure that this must spill down, down the sky, and it's, I don't, I guess it's gonna be...
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Next witness?
Yes, uh, Mr. Curly, please. Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Curly has testified before this board on numerous occasions, so I would offer him as a, uh, an expert in professional engineering. So Mr. Curly has just been qualified, you prepared the plans that you just put up on the board, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's, we'll have to mark that, I suppose, as a fourteen. Bob, do you have another plan that we should mark while we're doing it?
I believe this plan will surprise...
Okay.
So I made it to the board, uh, based upon, there were a few letters that were prepared by both, both professionals, there was some concern over understanding how the, how the existing and proposed lights, uh, would perform, so what I did was, I prepared this lighting exhibit with the thought process to answer those questions, and really, the, the lights, um, that have any impact on any, any lighting that surrounds the existing facilities, are the gooseneck lights, uh, there's, so let me, let me just read the title of it. So, it's titled, uh, Lighting Exhibit, and it's dated nine, one, seventeen, and it's unrevised, and that, that's probably a error.
That, that's what it's dated. It's revised, then?
It's, it's unrevised.
It is, though. All right, so that date is probably meant to be altered?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine.
It was the base map that I utilized from the officials. That's why I apologize. So I prepared this exhibit, again, with the thought process to evaluating proposed lighting that's being proposed for this project. Along the boardwalk, we have eight goosenecks along Ocean Avenue. We have 10 goosenecks along either side, on the north and south side, we have three, three fixtures. None of the light that is from these gooseneck fixtures extends larger than 10 feet from the foundation of the building. It's all very, very minimal. And as you can see from the catalog cut, it's angled towards the structure itself. What exists today, there are wall packs that are mounted onto the building. There are high-pressure sodium. They're probably 400 watt. And there's, there's four wall packs on the ocean side and on Ocean Avenue and on the boardwalk side, and two wall packs on the north and south side. Those will all be eliminated. So there won't be any glare that currently exists from those lights. All of these lights are gonna be directed at the building, so...
So it's gonna be an improvement?
And a, a large enhancement over what currently exists. Again, from an engineering standpoint, I hate to say this again, but this is pretty boring applications in an existing building. It has existing facility, existing utility connections to it, existing facilities that are currently functioning and have functioned over the years. There's no intention to modify those. They are modifying the electric service for the interior of the building, bringing it out of the basement and onto the main level so that it's out of the floodplain. From a utility standpoint, that's, that's pretty much the extent of the improvement that's going to be made. From a grading standpoint, there was a question that was in one of the reviews in regard to ADA compliance and that the side ramps, if they were compliant or not, the maximum slope on the side ramps is about three and a half, no, excuse me, three and three-quarters percent. A ramp could be as, as steep as 5 percent, so without having to have a break in it and or handrails. So it's, it's all ADA compliant surrounding the building. Our proposed ramp in the front will have handrails, and it's, again, the width and the length of on the, on all of the runs are compliant.
Bob, we have discussed screening the transformer in the northwest corner. Why can't we do that?
So the Jersey Central Power and Light has minimum mandatory requirements for keeping clear distance from the transformer, and that's so that they can access it if, in the event that there's a, a trip or a, a fault in, in one of the, one of the circuits, so that they can open the circuit and work on the transformer or work on the, on the area. It has to be, again, has to be fully accessible from the front for, for 10 feet and the sides and the rear for 5 feet.
So the contours of the property would preclude any type of screening?
That's correct.
Question, that includes vegetation of any kind?
That's correct. You're not, but in particular in the front, where the, where the transformer has to lift up, because when they operate the tran, when they operate disconnecting the electricity, they use a 10-foot fiberglass rod to open up the knife switches. So they need to have a 12-foot area in front of the transformer for them to be able to operate those knife switches.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a landscape plan, but we don't need one though either, right? Because we don't have much to...
Yeah, there's no area to landscape. It's, it's a streetscape right up to the edge of the decking.
And then there's something around that transformer, but as you said, that's not area that we could landscape anyway.
That's correct. That's pretty much all of the engineering thoughts on the proposed construction. I could go through the review letter very quickly as far as the engineering review.
That would be great.
So with the, item number one is the preliminary, effective flood elevations. The elevation, finished floor elevation of the building is around 14.3. It's above the finish, it's above the floodplain elevation. So as far as the existing structure, the finished floor is compliant. Any proposed construction that's, that's done in particular with the, with the elevator will have to be FEMA compliant, and there's methods that, that we can employ to provide for maintaining the motor above the flood hazard elevation. So we would be compliant in that regard. Item number two, again, we would ask for a waiver of providing the utility locations of everything within 200 feet of the structure. Again, based upon its, everything's connected to the building to date. The only thing that we're modifying is the electric service in the basement, so...
Your plans do have the utilities on it and the manholes and...
Across the frontage, I guess.
Across the frontage, right.
As far as the contours, I have spot elevations around the entire building, along the sidewalk, along the top of curb. So again, the contours don't necessarily serve the purpose. I do have contours on the side ramps, only because there's a fair amount of, there's a three-foot change in elevation, so I could contour that. But putting contours across the front of the structure, again, it's pretty flat. That's, that would be a waiver request. As far as the demolition plan, again, the, the entire site's being basically utilized property line to property line. So as far as demo, it's, it's just the removal of the existing stairs that exist today and replacement with a deck. Soil boreings, again, there's no, there's no proposed construction of, of the building itself that would require soil boreings. So a waiver would be, a waiver would be requested. The width dimensions of the existing proposed sidewalks, well, the sidewalk exists today. Our proposal is not to modify the width. If there's a problem or if there's a, some damage during the construction across the front, that'll have to be replaced in kind in the same, in the same area.
We could put those dimensions on the plan if required.
Definitely, definitely.
And just ask for, subject to approval.
I'll have those dimensions added to the plan.
I think we pretty much went over the gooseneck lighting.
Right.
And the amount of illumination. And then number eight's the landscape plan. We did that. Now I'm rooftop equipment. I'm jumping over these, Bob. If you have anything you want to add, but I think we already did this. We have our colored rendering. Kevin handled the proposed operations to the best he knew. The traffic analysis report, we, we're not required to have a parking, we don't have a parking requirement in, in the waterfront zone as far as I understand, and can you, can you address that?
Yes, so there was an overall traffic report that was completed for the waterfront redevelopment zone with the initial approval of the CAFRA application that was cosigned by the city and submitted to the state. That traffic report indicated that there was sufficient parking for all of the commercial uses that are being proposed within the waterfront and for 2,164 dwelling units throughout the waterfront redevelopment.
What's the date of that traffic study? What is the date of that?
It's 2004.
It's currently being redone by the waterfront developer. So moving on, 13 deals with the disposing of solid waste, which we've addressed. 14 is applicant's proposed signage, which we've addressed. 15, the, it asked to show the materials, and we've done that. So 16, when we get to that, Bob, we, we're talking about the methods of emergency vehicles needing to access the site. Is there any issue?
So on either end of the, either end of the proposed building, or excuse me, proposed construction, there's an act will be maintained open. It's not being intended to be modified. And any need to access the building or access the immediate adjacent portions of the building to parks and access the area. So there's, there's...
No issue there.
There's no issue there.
So on 17, we're using the same utility connections, and those utility connections are adequate for...
That's correct.
Freehold Conservation District, I suppose we're not disturbed.
So I do have a, I do have a, a letter that was issued, issued by Freehold Soils for this project, and it was, again, based upon the previous approval, but it's dated September 26, 17, and they can supply that to the board.
Yes, if we could mark that. 15, okay, thanks, Michelle. Moving along, number 20 is ADA. You've addressed that, as did Mike. 21 references CAFRA. Kevin testified that that's in the process. 22, I don't really know where this might be, the PVC sanitary line and cleanup.
There's an existing lateral that leaves the basement portion of the building and ties into the sanitary that's out, out the cartway. Yes, our foundations will have to miss that. Obviously, we'll have it marked out and make sure that the foundations for the decking area do not conflict with the, with the existing sanitary line.
So we can comply with 22, as we agree to?
Yes.
Okay. Number 23 is just a statement, as to structural engineering and insight saying that they're not inspecting for that. The streetscape improvements, Kevin discussed the bike racks issue. 23, or I mean, rather, 25, screening of any exterior mechanical equipment. I believe you addressed that, as did Mike. As far as sanitary sewer connection, you'll deal with the city on that, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Compliance with all previous resolutions. I think that this resolution's gonna supplant the last one, but I think we're in compliance with that. And, and the TRC memo asked us to address the lighting, and we were going to make the building white rather than red, and we've done that. And I believe Michelle Alonso's memo is, had the same or similar. I can take a look. Michelle may have had another condition, but I believe we're all compliant. She said the design comments of the TRC, TRC should be implemented. We've agreed, white brick, we've agreed to that. The railing at the front patio shall not be mounted on the exterior facade of the patio. Are we compliant?
We are compliant. We have a detail.
We have a detail.
The sign that signs on the top.
Okay. Each sign that requires a variance shall return to the planning board. We have no problem with that. We're not asking for variances tonight. If we need one, we'll ask for it. And then she says that in general, the project is consistent with the stated goal and objectives of the waterfront redevelopment plan. We take no issue with that.
I have a question. What about loading control for the businesses?
Kevin?
Any questions from the board, professionals?
Number 28, my letter will be there.
Yes, so there's, the existing doorways, in particular, they do swing out. They swing out onto the boardwalk today. The overhang on the roof exists today. It'll have to be, I guess, legally less by the, it's an existing condition. The gooseneck light will fall within that 24-inch canopy that extends over the roof. So yes, we would have to get that, I guess, legalized if it has not been from previous approvals.
We'll comply with that.
Yes.
I'm not arguing. Sounds good.
City construction, building conveyed to your client or someone, and that roof overhang exists. I mean, it's a matter of proof, we're not getting approval, but legally, they solved it with an approach on their own. It would be hard for us not to allow your...
Any questions from the public? Yes, be specific, though, to this witness. We'll make your questions specific to this, to his testimony and his report and then...
And just, just for the record, before Mr. McNolley testifies, I, I think we've addressed the, the planners' concerns to, thank you.
Ernest McNolley, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. You said you have a 2004 traffic study, and it says that there's plenty of parking for everybody. And for how many units did you say condos? 2,000?
2,164.
And he's, and Mr. Manzella's indicated that this study is being revised. The traffic study is being revised.
Yeah, you know, I'm wondering about that, 'cause a lot of things when I come here that I hear are from 2002, 2004.
That's when the original agreement was signed.
I mean, they're like old stuff, you know?
That's when the original waterfront redevelopment agreement was adopted.
I'm aware of that, I know.
So everything is based on that date?
Okay, but it, it just seems like, correct me if I'm wrong...
Where is your question? Your question?
My what?
Where is your question?
That was my question.
No, those are statements. Do you have any further, do you have any additional questions?
2,164 units.
All right, and that's what we're using.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Any other questions? Any comments from the public?
I guess we have to move to closed comments.
We can move to open it, yeah. Move to open public comment on this application.
A second?
If you'd like to get up and make a comment, now you can.
Now you get sworn in, Mr. McNolley.
Ernest McNolley.
You swear certain testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, the other, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Pick your hands.
I don't do this too often. Go ahead.
Okay, just state your name again for the record.
Ernest McNolley, 400 Deal Lake Drive.
Thank you.
So now I can comment. I don't need a question.
Correct.
Oh, now this is my time. Thank you.
This is it.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
So I have three minutes?
You have three minutes.
That's perfect. All right, so it, it's my comment that I think, I think I expect to be here another 28 years, I'm hoping, that eventually, shortly, I'll come here and we'll be talking about an oil well on Ocean Avenue. And somehow, with the gifted, talented people that I see here, the developers, their lawyers, et cetera, I have to admit, as a homeowner here, and I'm 70 years old, I've never seen such skill, I mean, to kinda navigate everything. For example, I think we're talking about Madison Marquette buying from Convention Hall to Palace in 2002, or from Asbury Partners, and the names are always changing. But the bottom line is, whenever you see the final project, like Convention Hall, perfect example, if, if you look at the agreement, it said, oh, we're gonna refurbish it, we're gonna make it like new, we're gonna populate it. And of course, it got populated, and it's making a lot of money. I mean, I don't know. I know engineers that say it could fall down. So the question is, you know, all these agreements from 2002, do they really mean anything? Or is it just that if you take the right engineering proposal and the right architectural and the right legal representation, I'm allowed to comment, right?
So everything that's proposed...
So my comment is, when will this...
Just let me go. I just had the question. I was gonna answer it for you.
Okay, sir.
So applicants come before the board, and all of their, their development proposals are in compliance with what's in the redevelopment agreement. So they, they can't do anything that's not approved in the redevelopment agreement.
I'm aware of that.
Okay, so...
And I think we're all...
It's not any wrangling.
Right, just let me go.
No, but I think we're all aware, we're all aware of that 2002 agreement and the nature of it, and yet no one's ever challenged it. nature of it, and yet, no one's ever challenged it. The council sometimes alludes to the fact that, oh, it would be so expensive to challenge it, but no one likes to hear the signers of that agreement. Most of them got locked up, so I just like to get it on the record that every time we refer to that 2002 fiasco and 2004, most of the signers wound up in federal prison. And then we refer to it now as like the golden rule of Asbury Park development. But if you see the development in 15 seconds, it's always presented that we're doing things for family and we're doing things for the kids, and yet, the more you look at the boardwalk and Ocean Avenue, the more it's for adults and out-of-towners. So, you know, you can present it one way, but...
Thank you. Should we close public comment?
Move it.
Second. Ballot favor.
Aye.
Repose. I said it.
Okay, so now, do we act on it? Can I get a motion?
To do it.
To approve the application?
Yeah, approve the... I have...
Also, I actually have a question too, that it's like these temporary waivers, does that become important? How does that work? Like just the temporary waivers in the, like in the engineer's report?
No, no temporary waivers. Waivers are waivers.
Oh, okay.
So you're either granting a waiver or if they've agreed to a temporary waiver, we're waiving it for the purposes of now, but they'll provide the information as of present.
Right.
Got you.
Yeah, I have always, anything that's in there that always says, every, all the testimonies are incorporated. You're in, anything in prior due was not affected by this application seeking remains in effect, subject to compliance with the items that were brought out, just as reported the act that we applied to, and as well, anything the plan has reported, any. One specific one is cap for approval. Two, that applicant will be returning ultimately for additional signage tenants other than those signage that's addressed in the proceeding, as well as the bureau, additional bureaus that will be for these, like signage committee or...
Public committee.
Public committee. Any encroachments, if any, have to be approved by the mayor and council, and basically that's it for the management of this, unless you have something else.
I just have one, based on what we talked about tonight with respect to the lighting that was offered, that there could be a variable, a dimmer for the LED fixtures that be used to accent, to be assigned to whatever, and so that they can be calibrated either on a timer when businesses are done or if they're being too bright after they're installed. So I would suggest that that's a condition that should be added specifically.
So a dimmer and timer installation for all of the lighting or all lighting?
For the sign light, I think was what you were talking about.
I think, I think Mike was talking about angling it up as the roof, is that what we're talking about?
I think with the blade signs.
Oh, the blade signs, okay. Can we do that?
Yeah, you can.
Okay.
Actually, all, it should be appropriate for all of them.
And also the land, you said that that could be adjusted.
It's important to do it now because that's something that is part of the light or not part of the light.
Right.
So you put it out, you may never use it or never did, but you need it now.
I have a question about that.
And documented in your architecture document.
Okay.
Yeah, my question about that is, because you had mentioned that it is part, I mean, in the spec, you can see that it's an option, so we're saying it will be in there, but then it doesn't mean that anyone has to use it. Like, how do we, you know what I'm saying, like if there was an issue, how does that work?
It could be, I guess, it's too bright, I guess we can have someone, you know, that's, I guess that's how to understand.
So if they, somebody complains and they go to the zoning enforcement?
It'll fall somewhere in the zoning code. Probably zoning for...
Zoning.
It's been code enforcement.
Yeah, we put it in and code has to enforce it.
Right.
But this is somewhat of a subjective standard though. There's no standard that you can apply here, so even if you inspect it, it's subjective.
That's kind of what I'm saying, is that how do you, saying that it's an option to have it in there is helpful, but who enforces that? It has to be at this measurement.
I think the, so just so we're clear, they haven't testified to any measure, right?
We don't know what the brightness is.
They've testified that they're kind of good lights, right? And they'll do the right thing and they won't be too bad. So this is a subjective requirement, so when they get installed, folks are going to have to see, first of all, it's on the applicant to try to calibrate it so that nobody comes out and complains about it. And if something happens, then hopefully, whatever that mechanism is that allows for the water change can solve that problem.
The way I think this will occur is by complaint. If you get no complaints, it's going to be fine, unless the applicant decides that it's too bright or not bright enough. But if you get a complaint, it's going to go to the zoning officer, zoning code are going to come down and say, what's going on? We're getting some complaints, and you've got the mechanism to turn it down, because we have no standards, as Michael said, there's no standards that we can apply here. So that's the way this will typically occur.
May I ask you one question? Because you can always find someone to complain about something.
Have our public board.
Could we consider, if it's, does it matter? And Bob, let me know if this is reasonable from your perspective. If we say at the edge of the property line, if we have zero light spillage, then that's what I would understand as the objective.
This is not, the light spillage, Bob's already given us a point by point that kind of satisfies that. This is the sign lighting that's going to hit the sign and...
Right, but it's not spilling.
But that's not the issue. The issue is how bright that's going to be. It's not, it's not...
So then how do we set a non-subjective term, we don't have somebody to plug the light switch every day?
You know what I'm saying?
I think we go with good faith. If there's a complaint and we agree to, you know, deal with it with the city in good faith, that's the only thing that we can do.
Certain things that, due to the extent of what's going on, not everything can be codified. So obviously, some things are going to be give and take, you know, it evolves, things evolve.
Yeah, and it's not just any complaint, it has to be a legitimate complaint.
Yeah, exactly.
So a legitimate complaint will be handled with good faith between the city and the applicant. I mean, they have an ongoing relationship now, so...
But you are stipulating that you have the ability to turn it down or turn it up?
Yes.
So that's important, isn't it?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, they...
That's important.
Make sure that's...
That condition.
Just in case it's needed for either up or down.
Can I get someone to?
I move to approve the application with the conditions as stated by our attorney.
Second.
Second.
Well, Councilwoman Clayton.
Yeah, yeah, you came in late.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, yeah, but for the record...
Aren't you glad you stayed?
No, but her comments were important, so you couldn't, you weren't able to participate since you didn't hear the entire application.
Oh, she can't second it.
And now I'm going to second.
Right.
Yeah, we're still about it.
Can I get another second? A second second.
I could stay home?
I guess.
I'll second it. You only missed like 10 minutes, so...
No, it's okay, there's participants.
But she just can't.
Somebody can challenge her.
Right.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Trudy Seifax?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
When do y'all expect y'all might get this done? What do you, like, what is your target date for completion?
It's going to depend on how long the Capper compliance takes, how long the government takes. These are always welcome.
Shame you got to get to this so much.
Hurts us far worse than hurts you.
Yeah, I'm sure. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
We don't have any resolutions or anything, do we? And there's no committee report at the moment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of them?
Aye.